Good evening and welcome to Monday, June 2nd, 2025 City Council Meeting. Our invocation will be provided by Laura Dean Wiley, Chair of God at Center Committee at Truman Heartland, or excuse me, Truman Heritage Habitat for Humanity. Please stand for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Right, please bow your heads if you want to join me. Father God, I just want to thank you for a beautiful day. Thank you for the month of June, for this year that we've already experienced. And Lord, be with us as we plan the future of Independence. Please give your grace, your blessings, and your leadership to those that are making decisions, to those that are supporting them, those that are opposing them. Lord, let us speak with truth and kindness. And Lord, just continue to bless us as a country, as a state, and a city. It's in your name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember McCandless.
Here.
Councilmember Wiley.
Here.
Councilmember Vought.
Here.
Mayor Rowland.
Here. We have six here, one absent. We do in fact have a quorum. Could I have a motion to take to do the proclamations out of order, please? If you have a motion, we have a second, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes, and the motion passes, six in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to our first proclamation, which is going to be the I-Star Proclamation. And it is a great honor to give this proclamation to Detective Roach. You've been a dedicated member of the Independence Police Department for 23 years, serving in numerous roles, including patrol, SWAT, and now detective at the Special Victims Unit. You've also served as department's sole investigator with Internet Crimes Against Children's, handling some of the most difficult and emotionally challenging cases. And for that, we all thank you. Despite the gravity of his work, Detective Roach approaches every case with compassion, resilience, and unmatched professionalism. Known for his ability to connect with suspects and secure critical confessions, he has played a key role in bringing countless offenders to justice and protecting our community's most vulnerable citizens, our children. His dedication extends beyond investigations. He also serves as honor guard pipes and drums. Detective Roach exemplifies the spirit of the I-Star Award. Through his unwavering commitment, outstanding investigative work, and enduring strength in character, we are honored to recognize you this month as the I-Star recipient. So if I may, I would just want to read a few things off of the proclamation, and then we will ask you to come forward, get a picture, and receive your proclamation and the I-Star Award. Whereas the Service Recognition Program recognizes outstanding performance and exemplary acts of service by employees of the City of Independence. And whereas an employee committee selects the I-Star Award winner for independence, for service, teamwork, above responsibilities, and that award recipient for exhibiting the qualities and ideals that best exemplify public service. And whereas the recognition committee has selected John Roach Detective with the Independence Police Department as the I-Star Award recipient for June 2025. Now therefore, be it resolved that this council of the City of Independence recognize John Roach Detective of the Police Department for your outstanding work for protecting our city. So please come forward and receive your proclamation and award. As you all know, that'd be incredibly frightening. As the flames began to engulf the garage, a neighbor, David Labber, became aware of the fire and immediately rushed to the scene, taking decisive and courageous action. And whereas, with no thought of his own safety, Mr. Labber began urgently knocking on the front door of the burning home, alerting the resident inside and urging him to evacuate. And whereas, thanks to Mr. Labber's swift response and selfless intervention, the homeowner was able to safely escape the structure before arriving, before the arrival of emergency services. And whereas, fire crews from the Independence Fire Department responded promptly and successfully contained the fire to the garage and the attic area, with no injuries reported, and the rest of the home was preserved from further damage. And whereas, the bravery and quick thinking demonstrated by Mr. Labber exemplifies the highest ideals of our community, courage, and neighborly responsibility. And therefore, this council wants to recognize David Labber for his heroic actions on May 2nd, 2025, and let this proclamation stand as a tribute to Mr. Labber's bravery and as a member of this power, and the powerful impact this one citizen can have in the face of danger. Therefore, we want to give Mr. Labber this proclamation. So before that, I want to give the floor to my colleague, Councilwoman Vought. So Councilwoman, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I am going to change that a little bit, because that day was very chaotic and hectic. Mr. Labber happened to be driving down the street, which, 35th Street, which he normally does not do. He never goes that direction, and that day, he just, he got off work early, he just happened to drive down 35th, which Mr. Allenbaugh's home is right on the corner, and saw the flames, pulled around the corner, saw the garage doors had already been blown off, and he saw the cars, and so he knew someone was in the home. Then he took the action to call 911, knock on the door, go in, and get him out safely. So I'm going to try to, I just want to say thank you, but try not to cry, even though you're already not starting off well. So I just want to take a moment to personally express my heartfelt gratitude to Mr. Labber for his remarkable heroism in rescuing my neighbor, Mr. Allenbaugh. I have lived across the street from Mr. Allenbaugh for 20 years, and it saddens me now to look over there and see his beautiful home, which he built roughly 70 years ago, or 50 years ago, sorry, burned up and boarded up. But I am very grateful that Mr. Labber drove by that house at that critical moment when the garage was fully engulfed in flames, and smoke was coming from every window. If he had not arrived when he did, Mr. Allenbaugh might not have made it out in time. And he also went back in the house to, after getting Mr. Allenbaugh out safely, to get his cat. So I just want to extend my deepest thanks to Mr. Labber for his quick and selfless actions, to the fire, and to the firefighters who arrived very quickly so that the house was not a total loss. I also want to thank them for their daily commitment to stepping into danger to protect our community. Thank you.
So with that, Mr. Labber, if you would be kind enough to come forward to receive the proclamation, and we'll be happy to present this to you.
You should go. Come on.
We need some help.
Go.
We're missing one dollar.
that made him drive down 35th Street, even though that he never goes that way. So that is an excellent point. Madam City Clerk, I need a motion to accept the proclamations, please.
I can make a motion to accept the two proclamations.
Thank you. We have a second? Can I have a second, please? Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes, and the proclamations pass, six in favor, zero opposed. And that brings us to citizens' request. We have one citizen's request, Jeff Rogers. And I'm stunned that you're going to talk about the historic square. And you have five minutes.
Thanks. I just wanted to give some highlights of what's been happening in our historic district. First of all, we ended last year with our guest count, unique visitors to the square up by 14%, which is quite remarkable. Nationwide historic downtowns were at about a 2% increase, and several throughout our area were actually down. So we believe Hallmark probably had a little bit to do with that, but again, those were unique visitors, so not multiple people coming the same, to the same area. This year, we started the year with our messages of love and kindness by partnering with Westin Connection and their Heart-to-Heart program. Those messages always lend a bright red happiness throughout the area during sometimes that coldest part of the year. Next up was our Sold-Out Chocolate Walk. Once again, we sold out over 200 participants this year. It was a wonderful day, and even if it wasn't a beautiful day out, a day's always made better with chocolate, right? March roared in with our fundraiser for Hope House with the Shamrock Shuffle, so that's been the second year that they've been the benefactor of that particular event. And in April, we partnered once again with the Truman Library for Harry's Hop and Hunt. You may not know, but the Independent Square Association were the originators of that event, and so we're happy that that continues to grow. We had hundreds of kids and their families gathered on the Truman Library lawn for the egg roll and egg hunt, and balloon artists, face painting, storytimes, which Mayor Rowland participated in. We really appreciated that this year. So this has really grown into a wonderful partnership, and we look forward to continuing that. May each year brings Historic Preservation Month, and we highlighted work that happens actually throughout the year in our district. The facade program in our district continues to grow, and currently, there are restoration projects, facade projects on North Maine, South Maine, and West Lexington. So it's wonderful to see those buildings being cared for. We also celebrate Truman's birthday during the month of May with our free birthday cake at Clinton's. We had a giant community birthday card that we delivered to the National Park Service this year. And this year, we introduced a 5K to Western Independence with 161 participants in that run, or walk, or whatever you needed to do to complete it. That was the Give 'Em Hell 5K, and for those that ended that 5K run on an uphill journey, they said, yeah, you kind of did give that to us. And then this summer, we have a lot of things that are coming up. Wine Brew and Spirits, too, that happens on June 14th. So if you haven't grabbed your tickets for that, there are some VIP tickets available still. You can check out our website or our Facebook page. Moonlight Movies will return on Thursday nights. I know people have been asking, wondering with the construction if that will happen. It will, so make sure to check out that schedule when it's released, probably this next week. So that's Thursday nights. Look for an announcement. We may have one coming up on something that may occur on Friday nights. We're finalizing that. And then Sounds on the Square will happen on Saturday evenings. Outdoor Music at Liberty Lounge and Between the Bricks. There will also be jazz music at Ophelia's. That's Saturdays around 8:00 PM for most locations. Our historic wagon rides will return. Those are free every Saturday from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The route will be, of course, a little different this year, so we may be seeing more backs of buildings than the fronts of buildings, but they're all historic, right? And we'll also have our first-person interpreters helping to tell the story of the early settlers in the area. And we will introduce the Roots Festival at the Bingham Wagner Estate this August. That'll be on the 16th, so 8/1/6-day. Make your way over to the Bingham Wagner Estate from 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM. It is a ticketed event, but we'll have incredible musicians from throughout the area. We'll be using the covered porches, both the front and the back of the estate as the stage areas for that. And even though it's in the middle of summer, those incredible trees over at the estate will really keep us much cooler than if we were in almost anywhere else. So tons of activities that are happening, and all of these occurring while we're still working on that new streetscape. More than ever, please come up, give those local businesses your love right now. Summer's always a difficult time. Summer during construction, even more difficult time. We've had tremendous turnout during the Community of Christ Conference, so lots of people visiting, but continue to do that. Make sure that those people who are supporting all of the local PTA fundraisers and softball tournaments and, you know, all those types of things, it's those local retailers that do that. So show them your love, keep them growing, and be part of that growth. Come watch us grow. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. And that concludes citizens' request, and that brings us to a presentation. Mr. City Manager, I don't know if you want to queue us up on this one, and fire away.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Council, for your indulgence on this this evening. I know we typically don't have presentations at your regular meetings, but given the season that we're in, we thought this would be well timed to do this this evening. So I'm going to ask our Chief of Emergency Operations, Sam Morris, to begin making her way forward, and as she is. Most of you are probably aware of the devastating tornado that hit the St. Louis area a few weeks ago. There were some pretty important lessons learned from that event as far as emergency management operations go. And so we've asked Sam, in her capacity, to update you on what's happening here in Independence to ensure the safety of our residents and that similar circumstances hopefully wouldn't play out here. So I'm going to default to Sam at this time.
Mayor, members of the council, Sam Morris, Chief of Emergency Operations. This is really hot. Put this up here. It isn't. It seems... As everyone is aware, as Mr. Walker stated, the devastation that is in St. Louis that has occurred, there's a lot of news outlets that are reporting information as to what's come about post the events. And so I found that it'd be important for you guys to understand, as well as the citizens of Independence, what it is exactly that we're doing day in and day out with events such as what occurred over in St. Louis, how we would respond, and what we do to ensure that we are ready to go. So prior to the event, we take note of what's going on. We look at the exact same models. We use it as a learning opportunity for us, and we go over the models that the National Weather Service came out with. We look at the radar that came out. We look at the warnings that were issued, the watches that were issued. We learn how fast they were coming out, when they were coming out. We kind of scan the models. As those were coming out, we follow the storm with it. The second part of that is, of course, what actually transpired. The, as the funnel cloud came down, what did it look like? What was it comprised of? What were the wind speeds? What was the trajectory of the tornado itself? And then the damage that it did. And then what we look at is that recovery. We look at the damage that occurred, but we also look at what is the entity that was impacted? What are they doing? Who are they calling on? What does mutual aid look like? What are those resources? Where are those shelters? Where are those non-for-profits? What do those relationships look like? But most importantly, we're critical of ourselves in those situations. We look at where can we better ourselves? Where can we better those relationships? How much faster are we able to implement a shelter should we need to? At what point do we implement a shelter? So although this is devastating, that this occurred, please understand that the City of Independence, we take these opportunities to learn from them, and we look at our current practices and how we can better them. I want to also inform you and reassure you what's going on with our sirens every single day. So we have a server that is in our Emergency Operations Center. It is sending signals to those sirens every single day, nonstop. We're receiving messages back stating that yes, we received it, indicating to us that if we were to push that proverbial red button to sound the sirens, the sirens would understand it, they're receiving that communication, and they would then activate. So we are receiving those on a daily basis. We have people in and out of the Emergency Operations Center every day, whether it be volunteers, our command staff, and employees that are checking that. If we happen to run across a siren that is signaling or giving us an error, we send just that siren a message, states, "Tell me what's going on." If we get it back and we can fix it by rebooting, by going into the system and pushing out a different signal, we can get it to come back and activate, then we're fine. We'll keep an eye on it for probably about 24 to 48 hours to ensure that it's functioning properly. If we get an error back that we do not understand, we have a contract with Blue Valley Public Safety. They're onsite within 24 hours. They look at our server, they determine what that error is, and they have someone on scene in a matter of minutes. Please understand that if one of our sirens goes down because of an error that we are unable to fix, there, you are still able to hear other sirens throughout the area. So there is great overlap in the City of Independence. So we have 35 sirens, one of which is currently not functioning only due to some construction that's going on. I anticipate that being up and running and fully functional within probably the next 30 to 40 days. But again, please understand that there are four other sirens that are also signaling that you are able to hear. We have confirmed it for the last couple months in the area where that particular siren is down, so. And then, of course, as everyone is well aware, we have our monthly siren testing where we sound them. It's the first Wednesday of every month at 11:00. We do have an Adopt a Siren program where the individuals at home, they adopt a siren that's nearby, and then they give us a call when they've heard it. It allows us to ensure that they're properly functioning and being heard, but this is also a friendly reminder that you're, it's, the intent of a siren is not to hear it inside of your home. The intent of a siren is to warn those that are already outside to seek shelter. So I adopt a siren program. It does require you to be, to be outside. I think it's also important, based off of some of the information and data that we're receiving back from St. Louis, to kind of walk you guys through the process, what does it look like for the City of Independence when a storm is on its way? So we have staff that is constantly watching radar. We are in close connection with the National Weather Service. We're looking at the models, we're seeing how it's forming, we're looking at those lines and seeing what the trajectory of the storm is. There are also scientific factors that we're taking into account. We're looking at dew point, we're looking at the humidity, we're looking at the wind speeds. And so while we take all of that into account, we're closely monitoring that, no questions asked, both our storm spotters, our trackers, as well as our current staff. So you, at any given time when we are anticipating a storm, we have at least four to five people watching it. We are expected to have some non-severe storms tomorrow, so as we go through this particular meeting, we already have four... So as we go through this particular meeting, we already have four different people that are already looking at it, sending messages, talking about it through the app that we use for our command group. So with that being said, we have an app, a communication app, that we use with the National Weather Service that allows us a very small amount of time notification that we're going to issue a warning. We coordinate with the National Weather Service with our emergency management system, messaging system, excuse me, and that is RAVE. And you can sign up for that by going to our website, typing in "emergency preparedness" or "emergency alerts," and it will come up. You can get on there, smart911/rave, and you can sign up for whether it be text alerts, emails, do you want watches, do you want warnings, what are you worried about? Do you only want tornadoes? Do you want thunderstorms? What is it that you're looking for? Ice storms, snow storms, same situation. And so what we do is we use that system to be able to notify people through the National Weather Service. Now, we have created a boundary and a geographical boundary around Independence. It's a little, we break the barriers just a little bit to ensure that all of our residents can hear, but we have a geographical boundary that is connected. If there's a warning, then we will issue those sirens. If they do not go off, we have staff that can actually issue them as well. We've got four staff that can do it. If for some reason the four staff can't do it, we have two additional staff in the Emergency Operations Center that can. So at any given time, you've got six people that can do that. So storm fatigue is real. It is a thing. We try and be very conscientious of that and understand that that's why we've created that boundary, so that if the sirens go off, ensure that there's something very near within our area. We do have 12 shelters within Jackson County, and I'd just like to mention the two that are in Independence. We've got one at McCoy, and we also have one at George Owens, both of which can withstand an EF5 and hold approximately 500 people. So if for some reason you find yourself out and about and you need to seek shelter, you're welcome to go to either one of those. They automatically unlock. We have locks that we have the ability to do, to do that with. So obviously, we cannot prevent these natural disasters, but we can certainly learn from them, and we can reassure the citizens of Independence that we have people watching, that we don't, we don't take these risks lightly, and that we do everything that we can to make sure that our citizens are safe.
Any questions?
No.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate you giving this. I requested that we do this at the beginning of a meeting because, you know, people tail off at the end of it, and it's important for everybody to think about their own storm safety, what they need to have for a safety pack at home, how they check on their neighbors, et cetera. So I just, I was reassured after talking to you about the redundancy in our system and the frequency with which we maintain and attend to our sirens. So thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Please proceed.
Mr. Mayor, Sam, how many tornado sirens do we have in Independence?
Thirty-five, sir.
And how does it determine where those are put?
Based off of the spread that you're able to hear the siren, we strategically place them so that the majority or the most amount of individuals are able to hear those particular sirens. We're actually working with our GIS team. I was hoping to have that completed for you tonight to be able to see what that looks like as far as the spread of the sirens and being able to see it. So it's, they're very strategically placed, I guess. And I have a list of where those 35 are at if anyone is interested.
How common is it for one to fail? That you have to actually do the reboot or whatever?
Last year, I think we had approximately four to five maintenance calls, and generally it's down for less than, you know, 12 hours. I could easily call the Blue Valley, and they would be out within the same day, and they would have it back up and functioning within just a few hours, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we've got a great working relationship with them. It's very fast.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else have further questions? Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
And thank you, Mr. City Manager, for making that happen. Appreciate it. That brings us to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, make a recommendation to, or make a motion that we approve the reports and recommendations to the city manager.
Thank you. You've got a motion for the reports and recommendations to the city manager. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. We've got a motion and a second for the reports and recommendations to the city manager. Does anyone want to pull anything for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Item number two.
Item number two. Please proceed.
Mr. Mayor, item number three and Resolution 25749.
Number three and 25749. Items for separate consideration. Okay. Seeing none, let's go ahead and do the roll call on the consent agenda.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes, and the consent agenda is approved, six in favor, zero opposed. This brings us to item number two. Councilmember Fears, the floor is yours.
Mr. Mayor, request for the city manager. I guess, Mr. City Manager, on these fees, I noticed on the parks and recreation fees that they're all, on copy I have, they're all lined through, and I think you and I had a little conversation about that. Just want to make sure that that's correct, or do we need to maybe postpone this and fix it?
Yes, sir. Thank you for that question. I was able to visit with our Director of Parks and Recreation. That was the intent as written. The explanation for that is that in visiting with our peer communities around the metropolitan area, most of them are not putting their park programming fees in their citywide schedule of fees. Rather, they are posting them online and in their facilities for the community and the patrons to be able to see, but that gives the administrator of the Parks Department the latitude and flexibility to adjust programming more dynamic up or down based on demand for services, new programs that are added, et cetera. So this would place under the purview of the Director of Parks and Recreation the ability to adjust those, but would still have those publicized both online and in the facilities for patrons' awareness.
Okay, so, well, here you're saying they're not required to be in the schedule of fees, and maybe, this may be a request, question for Mr. Kovar, but why are they not, I mean, why are some required to be in the schedule and others not? Maybe that's the question.
There's really very little that is required to be in the schedule of fees. The, you know, there's, what has to be in there is essentially anything that you all have to approve. That's, that in itself is actually a pretty, a pretty short list. But historically, that in order to, to, you know, make sure that everyone's on the same page and full transparency and accountability, the council has always, has always, you know, approved the schedule of fees along with, you know, and that's included, again, I think the majority, if not all, of the fees the city charges. But really, there's very little that actually has to be in there. So I think it really comes down to what you all want and expect to be included in the schedule of fees and whether you're okay with having certain ones not included.
Okay. I'm not sure what I think then. That was a different answer than I expected, so that's, that's good. Okay. I don't think I have any other questions. I'm not, I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the, the schedule of fees.
Okay. We've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the fee schedule? I just, yeah, that, after our discussion on Friday, that kind of surprised me, too. I, I'm almost of the opinion of kind of waiting to see what the ramifications are, but I don't know if that's the sense of my colleagues. I would just really like to ask Mr. City Manager, if I could, ask you a question. Is Mr. Heidi willing to set the fees for pickleball court?
That's a contentious issue, so.
That is, that is, I, yeah. Yeah, to be honest with you, if I could defer that to someone else and they set that fee, you know?
Yeah, but that is, all joking aside, sir, those are the kind of programming things that would be determined by the director, again, kind of dynamic based on demand, what we're seeing relative to our other peers in the marketplace, hopefully to make our programming more competitive since we are here in a larger metropolitan area. There are options for a lot of folks. This will hopefully provide more of a competitive edge for, for our recreation programming.
And if we ever wanted to step in and, and talk about it or adjust it, we certainly could, so, okay. Very good. Anyone else have further discussion? Seeing none, we've got a motion and a floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on item number two.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought. Mayor Rowland.
Yes. Item number two is approved, six in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to item number three. Councilmember McCandless, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, can you just talk about the sidewalk program, where we expect these to occur, when they're going to happen, when they'll be finished, how much disruption?
Yeah, I would, for this one, Councilmember, I'm going to ask the Deputy City Manager, Lisa Reynolds, to come give a little bit more in-depth overview for our benefit.
And while you're coming up, we have to acknowledge the astronomical price of concrete, which is making everything so much harder to get done, so.
It absolutely is. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Lisa Reynolds, Deputy City Manager and Municipal Services Director. To answer your question specifically about this project, it is planning, we're planning to start basically on the heels of the Strawberry Festival, so we obviously didn't want to start work and interfere with that festival. And the contractor has 90 days per the contract to complete this project. As far as sidewalks to parks and sidewalks to schools, it's an annual program that we put capital, capital project money to in the budget every year and focus, again, just on park locations and specifically elementary schools. And so Castle Park is the target of this particular project. And then, as you all probably remember, Castle Park is also one of the seven elementary schools that will be targeted with GeoBond dollars as well. So there's very little infrastructure around that elementary school in particular, so this does one small section, and GeoBond dollars will fill in other blocks around that school.
So I just want to be crystal clear that people don't see one small section getting done by Castle Park and think that that's the entire portion that's being attended to. There will be additional as we bid out the bond for sidewalks.
Correct. This project is 100% separate from GeoBond. This is a street sales tax project, as all of our annual sidewalks to park and sidewalks to schools programs are.
So it's just a taste of things to come.
It is.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. I move approval of item number three.
Thank you very much. We've got a motion for approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on item number three? Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. Item number three passes, six in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to Resolution 25749. Councilmember McCandless, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We've been waiting a long time for a convention in Visitors Bureau. I think we've missed out on some opportunities to invite people to our wonderful and historic town because we didn't have that dedicated resource. Parks did a wonderful job, but it's different when you have to manage 50 named parks and 8,000 acres or whatever it is, 800 acres, so I'm giving you a raise over there. Can you please talk about how we got here and what you anticipate the Convention and Visitors Bureau being able to do for the city and what the next steps are?
I would be glad to. And again, let me start by thanking the council for your vision and your support as we've moved this forward. So as Councilmember McCandless astutely noted, our department has done a good job of managing our tourism function, but there are certain competitive disadvantages to having a municipally-owned and operated tourism function. So to help put Independence on a more level playing field with our peers, because we believe, and rightfully so, that we have a better, you know, historic site offerings, facilities for events, et cetera, we want to make sure we're marketing and advertising those in the most compelling and attractive way possible. So with this agreement that would be approved tonight, this would outline roles and responsibilities for both the city and the newly established Convention and Visitors Bureau, or Visit Independence, as it's officially known for doing business as. Previously, council gave authorization to resolutions that allowed us to start establishing this entity, and that is going very well. Bylaws have been adopted for this organization. Articles of incorporation are on file with the Secretary of State's office. The board has now had two official meetings, are deep in the process of hiring its first employee, the executive director for the Visit Independence CVB, already having some conversations about where this function would be physically housed, so that is moving very well. The next piece that needs to come together is the operating agreement between the city and the CVB, which, as I stated, would come through this action tonight. This identifies the amount of funding that would be allocated contractually to the CVB from the city's transient guest tax. The city would still retain a majority of our transient guest tax funds for operation and maintenance of our historic sites, et cetera, but a portion of this would then be allocated for the marketing promotion, et cetera, of Independence and our facilities, our historic sites, et cetera. So we are well down the track. I would say maybe even a little bit ahead of schedule. I'm very pleased with the work that has been done. I think a very dynamic board has been appointed, and they've got a strong vision, and this tonight is just one more action that advances that narrative and allows us to get this thing further off the ground.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I move approval of item 25749.
Thank you very much.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second for the Resolution 25749. Any further discussion on 25749?
Just a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
So appreciate the, the work done on this, and like Councilmember McCandless said, I think this has been a long time coming, and I think there's a lot of opportunity and a lot of possibilities that come through this. Just one question, on the contract itself, I saw that, that, just the way I read it, it talked about if our taxes that we incur for, or that we receive for those functions were to decline substantially, then we have like an option to reduce that if we needed to.
Yeah.
But, but, and so I just think that's a fiscally responsible way to take that, that contract in place, and so I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you.
Anyone else have further discussion? Questions, comments?
I just have a comment. So I was doing a lot of research on, on these, and I found so many advantages, I could have written a bunch of pages, but one thing that I think, it provides continuity. So volunteers come and go, they don't last their terms, and I just think that this is just, staff, CVB, you know, will provide stability. So I think if the goal is to grow Independence as a tourism destination, it makes sense to have a professional and data-driven board or bureau, so just wanted to say that.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else for the discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion on the table for approval of Resolution 25749. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. Resolution 25749 passes, six in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to our public hearings and a regular agenda, and Madam City Clerk, please read the first public hearing.
A public hearing for the amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 14 of the Independent City Code relating to motor vehicle repair. Full public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Rick Arroyo, the Assistant Community Development Director of the city. This code update was considered by Planning Commission on April 15th of this year. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this, of recommending this code update. This is an update that expands the exemption of the 750-foot automotive use separation requirement along Nolan Road, or better known as the Miracle Mile, between 33rd Street and Aberdeen. This expansion includes some properties that are within 1,320 feet east or west of Nolan Road. Road. There is a map that specifically outlines this area. It also creates a new automotive use group for accessory installations, for things like window tinting, car stereos, or alarm systems, that is taking out of the normal auto uses. So, that wouldn't be part of the 750-foot separation. So, again, created a new use group for that. With that, I have no new information for this full public hearing.
Thank you. This is a full public hearing, so does anyone want to come forward to speak in favor of, in opposition to, or for information purposes only? Anyone want to speak in favor of, opposition to, or for information purposes only? Third and final call. Anyone want to speak in favor of, opposition to, or for information purposes only? Seeing none, we will close this public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-035, second reading, an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 14 of the Independent City Code pertaining to auto repair and motor vehicle equipment installation. Second reading.
Any discussion on 25-035? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a clarifying question, if I may. You talked about the exemptions for things like window tinting and detailing and perhaps even car painting that are not actually repairs. Is that, like, those things would be in that group?
So, basically, there's a, yes, installation. Now, auto painting is a little different.
Okay.
But, you know, normally, we think of auto repair, we're thinking of engine repair, diesel repair, things of those nature, more heavy in use. But what we've seen is a lot of auto uses that they're, right now, they're lumped into our auto use, but is it really automotive use when we're talking about window tinting or installation of some of these more accessory-type structures in vehicles? And so, that's what we're really pulling out of it.
And those would not have any restrictions on that?
Correct.
Because those are considered outside.
And these are not, these are not heavy, these won't have like major impacts to these areas.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion on this? Mr. Arroyo, I may ask a couple of questions, please. You said there was no, if I remember your words correctly, there was nothing with regards to the car painting that was impacting this regarding, but there are lots of regulations regarding to open up a car painting service.
Correct.
I mean, it's, you know, we've, I've talked to people who've done that, it's extensive. You obviously get intimately involved in how they're setting the shop up because there's so much concern with regards to fire safety.
Fire protection, yeah.
Absolutely right. There's just all kinds of concerns there. So, I didn't want us to think that, you know, there were no regulations there, there was tremendous, it just doesn't relate to how far apart they are in regard to this document.
Correct.
If I'm hearing incorrectly.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing, yeah. Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. Ordinance 25-035 passes six in favor and zero opposed. That brings us to the next item on the agenda. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Next item is the Fiscal Year 2025-26 Proposed Budget Hearing, full public hearing.
Thank you. And, Mr. City Manager, do you want to open this up or frame it in any way, shape, or form?
I would be glad to, sir. So, in accordance with the city charter, we have an annual public hearing. This is the community's opportunity to weigh in before the council has its final deliberations and votes on the budget, which will occur in two weeks, on June 16th.
Thank you. So, anyone want to come forward to speak in favor of, opposition to, or for information purposes only? If you do come forward, please state your name and address, please.
Laura Dominic, 3525 Blue Ridge Boulevard. Good evening, council. I've been pondering the changes made to the budget regarding the police and fire departments, and I decided to speak tonight just so I can voice my concerns. I watch every meeting, and I appreciate the answers to the questions that I have already had. Unfortunately, I still have just a few more. As always, please let me know if I'm missing the mark on anything. I heard the budget analysts say, I think it was last week or the week before, that the finance director would concur that Ruben Brown is okay with these changes, but I didn't hear that Ruben Brown has said they are okay with them. Obviously, if they have been consulted about the changes and have no issue, then I graciously defer to them. The budget for these two departments has been accounted for in the general fund for as long as I can remember, so I'm not clear why these changes are necessary. I've read the explanations presented in the budget, but I'm not comfortable with these changes clearly reflect the financial status of the city, which I think is really important, especially since we will be having a lot of people looking at our financial statements as pertains to interest in buying our recently approved bonds. The financial statements in the CAFRA will be accounted for using GAAP principles as defined by GASB. GASB defines special revenue funds in Statement 54 as funds used to account for and report the proceeds of specific revenue sources that are restricted or committed to expenditure for specified purposes. I did hear at last week's meeting that the expenditures from the sales tax revenue and the transfer from the general fund will be accounted for separately. So, again, if they're tracked separately in the sales tax revenue funds, I don't understand why they just can't be accounted for in the general fund, as they have been in the past and will be in the audited financial statements. I do understand that accounting structures can be different between the budget and audited financial statements. So, if this is the, the structure that you decide to go with, I think it is important for the community and possible bond investors to understand that there will not be a 16% unrestricted fund balance in the general fund when the audited financial statements come out for 2020, 2526. The general fund will be balanced, this, you know, per the state law. The general fund will look healthy, but is that truly reflective of the city's financial health? Those are my concerns, and now I just have a couple of questions, which I understand I won't necessarily receive answers, but just to pose them. Will the funds transferred into the special revenue funds from the general fund then be restricted, like the sales tax revenues, sales tax revenues are, which means the funds could not be transferred back to the general fund if the departments don't expend their complete budgets? Second, my understanding is that the allocation percentages for each department this year will stay the same in future years. If my interpretation is correct, what happens if the two departments' budgets diverge from each other? Such as if the fire department needs a higher percentage in the future than the police department does? Or if PD needs more than they have already been allocated? Third, has the city budgeted for the overtime necessary to provide public safety for the World Cup next year? I have watched online, because I'm a former public safety provider, some memos, or, excuse me, videos about FIFA games in the past, and also, I think, just this past weekend or two, we had issues that were related to, you know, just between countries, individually not in the cup, obviously, that would have been called for a whole lot of public safety personnel. I did hear at the meeting last week, or again, the week before, that you're hoping that the federal government will come through with some funds to help pay for that. Just personally, I just don't have confidence in that happening, just based on current environment. And one last thing, this might sound really silly compared to all of what I just said, but when the final budget is posted to the website, could you please post it as a PDF? Flipbooks are just really hard to read and digest, and I don't think I can even print it out without screenshotting each page. So, that might sound silly, but just a request. Thank you for listening to my questions and concerns, and again, if I've missed the mark on anything, I'm always willing to hear and appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to come forward to speak in favor of, opposition, or for information purposes only? And please state your name and address, please.
Good evening, Mayor Rowland and the members of the city council. My name is Steve Yurt, and I serve as Board President of the Bingham Wagner Historical Society. And again, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I love my history. I love the history of Independence. Be honest with you, I'd much rather be in front of tourists that we get every year around the world and speaking with them and sharing with them. So, I'm a little nervous, so, but here goes. I stand before you not as a steward of a historic site, but as a representative of the many citizens who deeply value the preservation of our shared heritage. The Bingham Wagner Mansion and Estate is one of Independence' most treasured landmarks, a place that tells a story, not of just buildings, but of a community, a region, and a nation in motion. In the early settlement days, before established roads laid out, the estate grounds were considered a shortcut on the road that later became part of the Santa Fe Trail. From the early 1800s through the late 19th century, thousands of wagons passed across this land, their journeys still marked by the wagon ruts that remain visible across the bridge from the mansion. These swells are physical reminders of the courage and determination that built the American frontier. This estate has been home to extraordinary people, including George Kalin Bingham, a renowned artist and Missouri statesman. And the Wagner family, prominent millers who placed, who shaped local history. It was also connected to Best Truman's grandfather, George Gates, through the Wagner Gates Milling Company. For nearly 100 years, Wagner's lived in the mansion, preserving its legacy until 1976. Just three ladies later, three years later, a group of private citizens, and with the support of the City of Independence, the property was saved and opened as a museum and public park, ensuring that its stories could continue to be told. Today, we ask for your renewed support. The estate faces increasing preservation needs that are beyond the scope of our current resources. You will notice water damage still inside the house from a leaky roof from a few years ago. The same roof today, now it is losing some of its shingles and losing its chimneys. Ceilings are started to come down in several of the rooms. Be careful when you walk around the wraparound porch because of the rotten wood, and on a rainy day, you can watch the rain drip through the light fixtures. And you will need your umbrella on the porch because it leaks. We do offer free water during the summer months for our tourists because of the heat throughout the mansion. We are the only historic site without air conditioning. Late in the summer, the third floor is off limits because of the heat. It is extremely difficult to maintain and restore paintings and other artifacts because of the heat. To continue protecting and interpreting this vital piece of Independence' past, we respectively request your assistance through the city's budget process and ask for your consideration, possibly for a special bond initiative just for the historic sites, that would provide essential funding for restoration and long-term preservation efforts. The Bingham Wagner is more than a historical site. It is a public trust. It connects Independence to its pioneering roots, welcomes visitors from across the country, across the world, and educates new generations about the people and pathways that shaped the American West. With your leadership and partnership, we can ensure this historic treasure remains a source of pride, learning, and inspiration for decades to come. So, I thank you for your time, your service, and your dedication to preserving the legacy of our great city. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you could, Lee, if you could give that, that's fine, just space, sit there. Thank you.
Hello, council and mayor. It's nice to see you. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Victorian Society Board, and we have some other board members that are here in attendance tonight, so I draw your attention to them. You guys know the Vale well, it's a well-known landmark in the area, even in the region. And not very many structures exist as a second empire.
If you could list your, please state your name and address, please.
Oh, sorry. Lee Williams, 3704 South Grand. We were just acknowledged about a year ago in Elle Decorating Magazine as one of 20 House Museums to visit in the United States. So, we loved being on the same list with the Biltmore Mansion. That's really cool. We welcome visitors from all over the world, you know, they come from, you know, regional, we get lots of good regional tourism, you know, just all over the place, and we welcomed nearly 3,500 in the last fiscal year. And that's even without a tourism office in place, so that's pretty good. And as you deliberate on your next budget, the mansion is in dire need of restoration. You have pictures that were taken today in front of you, and some of the exterior areas were last touched in the late 1970s, particularly the roof, the very top of the mansion. The list of projects is long and in excess of $2 million. Almost all the work the Vale needs is custom work and has to be, you know, the wood has to be custom milled, and also, we have to use restoration contractors to do that work because it's a very, you know, it's a specialty area. And Councilman Perkins isn't here, but I'm sure he remembers during COVID, the council appropriated $400,000 for the Vale and the Bingham over two fiscal years for restoration work. This money languished in the parks budget, and no work was ever put out for bid. And clearly, though, it was the council's intent at that time to fund some restoration. Even the budget presentation by Parks and Recreation makes no provision for the historic sites in question. It seems we have no accomplishments despite our self-funding of portory builds and window sash restoration, which is currently ongoing. We almost passed the recent bond issue, the question lost by 163 votes, just shy of the 57% that we needed. Another chance at a future ballot has a good chance of succeeding if the voters are asked a separate question about whether they are willing to support our historic sites and not confuse the issue with parks and recreation facilities. We understand there are many pressures on the budget, and there are difficult choices to make. We believe our historic structures are a worthy cause. They make Independence a regional tourism destination, bringing additional revenue to the city. It's interesting that we see the Vale pictured in numerous materials disseminated by the city, promotional pictures, even PowerPoint slides from city officials. It seems the Vale's kind of a go-to image to say, "Look, we're Independence. Just look at this place." Well, I would say, don't look too closely. The continued disinvestment in these structures will impact the years to come. Costs only increase and further threaten these places. Public disinvestment begets private disinvestment. We have seen this pattern. Independence has lost so much history already. Previous city leadership planted a flag, and I'm talking about like the early 80s, okay, and said, "These are worth saving. We cannot lose these." I hope we're not the generation that does. My request is for a study session with a close examination of the current and future needs of the city's honed historic sites. Rest assured, any appropriation that you may make in this year's budget will be tracked closely to make sure it is utilized or encumbered this, in this fiscal year. We are on the job. We look forward to more conversation and hope to see you at the Strawberry Festival on Saturday, and we'd be pleased to give any of you an extensive tour of the mansion and the grounds at any time which is convenient to you. Just, just contact us, and we'd make that happen. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Anyone else here to speak in favor of, opposition to, or just for information purposes only? And please state your name and address, please.
Ben Neal, 9204 East Lynnwood Boulevard. Good evening, mayor and council. I am a leader with KC Tenants in the Eastern, I'm sorry.
We'll need to have a motion here for the council in order to allow somebody from outside of Independence to speak.
It's an Independence address. It's an Independence address. 64052. East Lynnwood Boulevard is the key there.
Thank you very much.
Yes. I'm a leader with KC Tenants and the Eastern Jackson County Tenant Union. I have lived in Independence most of my life. My family, my mom and sisters, live here in Independence. I care a lot about this community. That's why I organize with the tenant union. I believe that every human being deserves a safe and affordable home, that it is our job, all of us in this room, to make sure that Independence is a safe and affordable community and a good place to live and work and raise a family. The rental-ready ordinance, the improvements, the updates that we passed this year are a huge and important step in that direction. And we have thanked the council and the city manager for unanimously passing that already. I want to take the opportunity tonight to thank you all again for passing that and continuing to work with us. I also want to acknowledge that laws are only as effective as their enforcement. So tonight, I'm here to speak in support of the city manager's budget plan that dedicates a staff person to overseeing the rental-ready program and how important that is, so that we can make sure that tenants' complaints are addressed in a timely manner, that any violations are addressed, that bad actors are held accountable. So, I'm just here to urge you to please pass the budget plan proposed by the city manager to dedicate that staff person. I'm in support of that. Our union's in support of it. I think it's really important for our community, for tenants, and for everyone. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else want to speak in favor of, or opposition to, or for information purposes only?
Jason White, 1024 South Forest, Independence, Missouri. Information only. Two quick topics. Number one, basic financial structure of the city. A while back, the city manager made a point of educating the community on the fact that the city's really short about $1 billion in investment. Now, a lot of people go, "That's a big number. It doesn't mean a whole lot," you know? Because it's just so big, it's unfathomable. But when you think about it, we've not had bonding capacity forever, and so, we piecemealed our finances together. So in reality, some of those bridges that have been shut down probably would have been renovated a couple of times over instead of shut down for decades. Some of the roads that we've disabused probably would have been taken care of a couple of times. So that $1 billion isn't really what we need today. It is what we haven't done over a significant period of time. And if you think of it that way, I really think $1 billion is probably what we've shortchanged ourselves. So where does that leave us? Well, it leaves us with a water park that's closed, a police station that's too small, and it's nasty when you go inside it. And tell you what, it's ugly on the outside. I don't know if you've stopped to look at that thing, but architecturally, that's a yawn. We had to lop off our buses. Now, I get it, that's not capital, but you've got to move stuff around in the budget to deal with priorities. So, we've, and then you've now heard from our friends with the historic sites. So, we have under-financed our city. You all had early conversations a couple of years ago and after doing after $250 million of bonding capacity. Turned out, we got $50 million. It's 5% of what we were short. Now, again, we're not short $1 billion right now, but $50 million was 5% of the billion-dollar factor. We have overemphasized, and part of this is my fault from my time in government, but we overemphasized our work on expectations on sales tax. Sales, Independence Center is not booming, Bass Pro isn't booming, and everybody buys online, so we don't have people from Lee Summit and Blue Springs coming to the box stores in Independence like we did 20 years ago. So, our ability to rely on them as a financial base has drifted. There's some good news. So, the same election in April where we had had the roads and streets pass, the Kansas City School District has also gone a long period of time without supporting the infrastructure of the schools. And they passed almost a $500 million with an 85% support of their community. So, people will recognize need. I just want to make sure that we don't give up on the needs of our community because we lost some of those efforts in April. Second thing I wanted to touch on is, as you may know, I'm active with a group called Indie Energy. We've been around 10 years. There's not many of us. We don't take outside funding. We've got a neat newsletter. We've done 15 programs around to help educate the community. IPL's got some serious challenges, and we hope you can get after some of those. I'll tell you, I really thought we'd be working on selling that darn thing. But the study you all did made it crystal clear to all of us, you can't make any money by selling it. So we're stuck with it. So we got to make the most of it. We need to get AMI. We've been dinking around with it since 2015. I get it. It was nasty, ugly debate 10 years ago. 98% of that was silliness. We're past it. You can't move outside of Independence without getting AMI electric meter wherever you happen to move. And by the way, you've all got AMI because you've got a gas meter in your homes. And so, it's a safe, it's an effective technology. It gives the person the ability to think and use their electricity better, and it gives the city opportunities. We need to make that investment. New generation. I'll tell you, it's a tough one because the environmental side of me wants to stick with solar and wind as much as possible. We've done some things there. We'll touch on that in a second. But we need some energy pretty quickly because we've got economic opportunities for the city, and IPL's not big enough to capture those. So we've got to invigorate our opportunity to bring in some new generation. Batteries are something we ought to be looking at. New governments. Nothing against you all as individuals, but you're the only city council and the 2 million people in the metro area that worry about a power company. And I'd be willing to bet if we gave you a quiz on, "Tell us how the SSP works and how we fit into it," I probably wouldn't score very many of you really high on that. Nothing against you. You're supposed to be worrying about what you got elected to do, and the power company is awfully complex. Not saying you're not smart enough to handle it, but you only got so many hours a day to deal with things. I know you've been having meetings. Springfield is a great model, and please, please help lead us to dealing with the governance model. It's a complex structure, and you're going to be better served, and so is the community. Last comment is solar farms. They are, we're now paying more than what they're worth. You can buy solar for this, and you're paying this. We need to have IPL spend some time on how to either buy the things so we take control over them and get out of that losing situation. It deserves some managerial approach to those issues, anyway. That's it. Thank you very much for your time. Unless you've got any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have to come back up and speak. I know this isn't part of the public hearing issue, but it's still open. People have texted me, "They can't hear." They can't, they had closed captioning so they could read what I was saying, but they couldn't hear it. Now they've shut off the closed captioning. They can hear IT talking in the background about it, but nobody has heard any of the people who have spoken. This happens, and I'm only bothered by this because I have to text a council member every week, every meeting that this happens. Please fix it, or please stop the conversation when somebody tells you that they can't hear. It feels really disrespectful to the citizens that you allow it to go on and on when people that are watching can't hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, have we heard anything on that? And what's the status of that?
I just received a message. I can't personally verify it, but that that's been fixed.
Okay. So, I don't know if there's any way for somebody to go outside the room and hear someone speak to make sure that they're being heard, so?
Maybe whoever's texting us can text one of us and let us know.
That'll work. Okay. Public hearing is still open, so anyone else want to come forward and speak in favor of, in opposition to, or for information purposes only? Anyone else want us to come forward and speak on, for an affirmation or opposition, or for information purposes only? This will be the last and final call. Anyone want to speak in favor of, in opposition to, or for information purposes only? With that being said, we will close this public hearing. And this is, in fact, a first reading of the budget. We will have the second reading of the budget on the 16th of June, if I'm correct, Mr. City Manager.
Correct.
Thank you very much. With that being said, that'll take us to our ordinances. Please do the first reading. Thank you.
25-037, first reading, an ordinance adopting the annual operating and capital budgets of the City of Independence, Missouri for fiscal year July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026, estimating the revenues for the fiscal year appropriating sums for the purposes stated in said budget, establishing operating transfers, designating fund balance allocations, establishing the authorized table of organization, and designating those who may make a requisition for encumbrances against appropriations. First reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
So, I asked city manager to, we circulated a proposed amendment to the budget that I'd like to put before the council tonight so that the public would have the opportunity to look at it for two weeks and until we come back and make the final approval. And that was all circulated to you today. It is, the purpose of this amendment is to move dollars from one area of the budget to the internal, or a couple of areas of the budget, to the Internal Service Fund, so we can bring together the risk management functions of the city into one particular place and let those, the people that do risk management for the city not only do it for the departments that they're currently located in, but do it for the entire city. And the idea here in discussion, and I've met with the city's consultant on risk management and a number of the key leaders of the city, the idea is to make this a more significant intentional look in terms of how we address some of the policy issues and some of the concerns relative to risk management in the city operations. And so, that's my motion tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll go ahead and second it.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the item?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, so the risk manager, the person that does the risk management, Independence Power and Light, what other job functions do they have?
At this point, none, sir.
Okay. They don't do anything with safety or anything like that?
Well, let me clarify. Their function is risk management, which involves, the nature of that is prevention of injury and accidents. So that would involve preventative things like safety, training, et cetera. But they're exclusively focused on Independence Power and Light employees.
Oh, okay, okay. That's what I was trying to get at. So I don't really have an issue with, if we want a risk manager for the city. My concern, and I apologize to Councilman R. Fears, we spoke earlier about this, but I've learned some more information since then, would be that we take somebody out of Independence Power and Light that's specifically focused on them, and all the liability associated with that. I mean, we're talking about, you know, life and death situations out there with thousands of volts of electricity. And I would hate to see them moved into something else where they would be doing something other than that job. Is there any thoughts on that?
At a very high level, I would say that I would feel comfortable with the council's approval of this amendment tonight because, again, your budget is a policy statement of values. And this has become a very costly operation in our city. As I shared with you earlier today, since 2016, we've seen 190% increase in our premiums. And our premiums, of course, are driven by our activity. Too often in this city, we've been in a position of haves and have-nots, and because our utilities are rate-funded, and if costs go up, we just raise rates. It's not lost on me that the two places that have a risk manager right now are the utilities, IPL, and then through the merger of departments over the last several years, Municipal Services, which includes water and sewer. So I don't think we should continue to punish our non-rate-funded entities, which frankly are some of the more costly that are driving these simply because we don't have the financial resources to do so. But we can continue to workshop this and figure out a way that benefits everyone without hurting the entity, as you pointed out.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have a further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none. We have a motion and a second on the amendment. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on the amendment.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
No.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. It passes five in favor and one opposed. Brings us to the next item.
25-032, second reading, an ordinance amending Chapter 5, Article 10 of the Independent City Code regarding private security guards. Second reading.
Any discussion on 25-032?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, do the, do private security guards, does loss prevention slash asset protection fall into that realm?
Yes, sir. It does.
Ununiform, the ones that, you know?
Yes, sir. Yep.
Okay, okay. I know it mentions that the Police Department in the ordinance approves the uniform worn by uniform security guards. Does that include, when they do the approval, do they take into account, I know they're not supposed to look like anything police-related, do they take into account that they have to include like the insignia of the private company and the name of the person wearing it?
Yes, sir, they do.
Okay. And are they going to be issued a card, like identification card along with this?
As far as the implementation of this ordinance would go, just to be certain, let me ask Deputy Chief Peterson to come up and clarify this for us.
Good evening. Deputy Chief Jason Peterson with the Independence, Missouri Police Department. In answer to that, I'll have to point you to the previous ordinance that we had, which was entitled "Watch Guards," and that's when we governed those cards. This is simply updating the information that we had in that ordinance and making sure that it complies with the standards nationwide as set by the FBI for NCIC when we do their background checks, and we would still issue those cards.
And then, maybe completely unrelated, like if you have an armed security guard, do you request like training certificates that they've qualified at some type of range?
There is, yes, there's qualification process that they have to adhere to with that application to verify that they would be sort of like.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have further questions? Anyone else have further questions? Okay. Seeing none. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Ordinance 25-032, passes six in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to 25-033. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-033, second reading, an ordinance amending Chapter 8, Article 6, purchases and sales, Section 3, and directing the city manager to amend the procurement policy accordingly. Sponsored by Councilmember Stewart. Second reading.
Any discussion on 25-033?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, currently, you're allowable, you're allowed to spend up to $100,000 without council approval. Is that correct?
Pardon me, yes, sir.
Okay, so, this ordinance, I requested it. And it's very specific, the certain type of studies that would take that out, and then they would have to go to the council and be approved regardless of the dollar amount. Can you kind of explain what studies those are?
Yes. We wanted, in our conversations, Councilmember Stewart and relaying this for the benefit of all others watching, we wanted to make certain that the major projects continue to move forward unimpeded for those kind of things that fell below the $100,000 threshold. So, things like engineering reports, architectural, design-type things, things that are ultimately part of a construction package that goes out, certain professional services like legal services, as those become necessary, all of those continue to move forward unimpeded. The conversation you and I had was to prepare an ordinance that would very specifically limit this to study-type services, so feasibility studies, if we were going to- So feasibility studies, if we were going to hire a consultant for a limited scope of services, like the council's annual retreat, things of, things of that nature, that were more about hiring an individual or a firm to come in and provide a limited scope of service, more of a professional study-type nature.
Okay, so anything other than what you just previously mentioned would stay at a hundred thousand dollars, correct?
That's the way this ordinance has been written in our understanding of how it would be implemented, yes, sir.
And our private conversations, I mean, you mentioned you didn't really see a huge issue with that. Do you still have that opinion?
We have about five, I would be challenged to think of a year where we've had more than five of these. So it's a very limited number of types, of these types of projects that we're dealing with annually. Unless, you know, this were to change further, but yeah, it's very limited in its scope.
Okay, all right, thank you. So the reason I brought this forward, there was, there was recently a feasibility study that was done, and I received a couple of phone calls about it, and these people were concerned that why was this done without, you know, any discussion by the City Council? And that's the reason this is brought forward. So in the interest of being as transparent and showing as much accountability as possible, that is the reason this was brought forward. So anyway, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a further discussion? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. City Manager, I just want to be sure I understand the types of studies. So, for example, if we had a feasibility study on wanting to double the amount of renewables or whether battery opportunities for the utilities would be a good use of funds, would those be considered in this category, or because they're in the enterprise funds, they're not?
I don't necessarily think it's tied to the funding source, Councilmore. My, my understanding, and I'll certainly ask the city attorney to correct if I'm misrepresenting this, but the type of studies that you just referenced, to me, fall more into that engineering-type study. How are we going to produce and/or supply or transmit power in our utility? So while I would certainly always consult with the attorney and the finance director to make sure we're following the procurement guidelines, those types of services I don't see. I see this being more of a, for example, the council will recall a few meetings ago, you postponed indefinitely a study of the National Frontier Trails Museum. That, that kind of study where it's more of a, not necessarily, how are we going to design it, what's it going to look like, but how much, you know, should we do this, what would it cost? How could it function, things like, of that nature. That's probably the best example that comes to mind right now.
So would it be a study to say, we should or shouldn't continue doing Santa Calagon on the square? That would be the sorts of questions we would ask.
That's the kind of thing I'm more anticipating, something that doesn't have, you know, more of an operational impact, like your example of battery-powered technology, but more of those, if you will, esoteric-type questions.
Okay, so if we ask the battery question, not how do you put in batteries, but would people be willing to pay a premium for renewable energy? That would be the feasibility study that would fit under this.
That's the kind of thing I'm envisioning, yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I've really had conversation with Councilmember Stewart to be sure I understood his perspective. And while I do understand it, I also think there are times when that can hamstring our activities. Had the amendment passed that allowed low-cost studies, like less than thirty thousand dollars, not to have to come to the council because those were the purview of the City Manager, I could have been able to support this. But since it's every one of those studies, I think that it, because this wasn't recommended from Audit and Finance as one of the ways to make us more efficient, I would actually like to refer this back to them for consideration for what they think the appropriate dollar amount would be. So I will be voting no on this with the intent of bringing this back in a different form. Thank you very much.
Please proceed.
So the council will remember that two weeks ago, I made a motion to amend this to put in a thirty thousand dollar threshold on this kind of study, and council chose not to approve that, and that's fine. But because of that, I will not be voting for this. Reason being, you know, I'm sympathetic to the concept, but, but I, if we have, you know, to make everything of this nature come before the City Council, whether it's one a year, or five a year, or ten a year, or whatever it is, doesn't make sense to me. That's why we have a procurement policy, that's why we put our policies in place. And to me, it's just bad policymaking to identify, you know, to say, we're going to do all of this, but we're not going to do this. And that's just, to me, that's not good policy. And so I'll be voting no on this. If it does come back before the Audit and Finance Committee at some point, we'd be happy to discuss it more, assuming that that's the case. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on twenty-five zero-three-three.
Councilmember Fears?
No.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
No.
Councilmember Wiley?
No.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and the motion fails three in favor and three opposed. That brings us to Resolution twenty-five zero-three-four. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero-three-four, second reading, an ordinance amending Chapter Thirteen, Article One, Section one-three-point-zero-one-point-zero-zero-five of the Independent City Code to prohibit metal detecting, prospecting, and treasure hunting in city parks and public spaces. Second reading.
Any discussion on twenty-five zero-three-four?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, can you give a little more detail on this and why we're doing it?
It's not because we hate prospectors, I promise you.
Because I am a prospector, so I do a little metal detecting. I'm just wondering if you hate me.
You approved the Santa Calagon contract earlier tonight, so this seems a bit unfair. I will tell you that we've had some circumstances lately of individuals who have asked to metal detect in the parks. We unfortunately find that to be problematic because if somebody were to find something, it's not so much we don't want them to have it, it's the digging of, for the item. And then if those, those holes aren't backfilled, that could prevent a safety issue for patrons in our parks and such. So this is just putting on the record, being clear that that's not an allowable activity within our city park system in Independence.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have a further discussion? Please proceed.
Do we have a lot of that going on around?
It, it, very limited right now, very limited, but we just wanted to be clear with the few folks who have called and requested that, just that we have something to point to on City Code that backs it up.
So I support this because I know, like, I know people that do this, and yeah, the digging, if people are not going to put the little pieces of dirt and grass back in, or if they're digging very deep, it's going to create a lot of damage. But would it be possible to get recommendations from the Parks Commission on if they could do that in certain areas?
Yeah, I think that would be perfectly fine, that we could, we could find out if there are suitable, you know, underutilized green spaces or something like that. I don't, certainly want to be careful to not overpromise, but I think that's absolutely something we could take to the Parks Commission for additional thought.
Okay, thanks.
The image I'm seeing, Mr. City Manager, and a question towards you is, I'm trying to think of the location in Arkansas, and they let you dig for diamonds. And I cannot for the, to save my soul, think of the name of that park, but it's a state park down there. And you'd see people walking out of there with bucketfuls of dirt, and they would take it home to, you know, and some people would dig holes, dig as, as deep as eight, ten feet deep. And then just the risk of them being literally covered up with, so that's the image I have in my mind. I'll be voting in favor of this to prohibit that. Do I want to have people to have the freedom to prospect? Yes, but I also want people to have the freedom to go through our parks and be able to walk safely with their dogs and our animals. And who knows if they're going to hit a gas line or whatever on there without checking and digging. It's the liability we have. I can see Mr. Coover, our attorney, shaking his head yes, always worried about liability, aren't you, Mr. Coover?
Yes, sir, always, always on my mind.
And so, yeah, I will, I will be voting for this, but I'm still trying to think of the name of that, that park. But anyway, that's my concern. I just, I was personally there, saw people digging holes ten feet deep, and I was going, hmm, what's the liability on this? Anyway, anyone else have a thoughts before we vote on twenty-five zero-three-four? Seeing no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, twenty-five zero-three-four passes unanimously, six in favor, zero opposed. That takes us to twenty-five zero-three-six. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero-three-six, second reading, an ordinance repealing Chapter One, Article Forty of the City Code, which outlines the establishment purpose and responsibilities of the Tourism Commission of the City of Independence. Second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on twenty-five zero-three-six? Anyone have a discussion on twenty-five zero-three-six? Just for those watching, Mr. City Manager, if you could briefly describe why we're going through this exercise?
Yes, sir, this item is removing the Tourism Commission from the Code of Ordinances as one of the established boards and commissions. This relates to the item that was previously approved tonight, the contract with the Convention and Visitors Bureau. As that entity has now been stood up, I'd really be duplicative to have the Tourism Commission as well. I will say many of the current, not all, but many of the current members of the Tourism Commission are now serving as directors on the new Board of Directors. So their expertise and institutional memory is still being incorporated into that new board.
Okay, thank you. I just want to do that clarification for people that might be watching. Anyone else have a further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, twenty-five zero-three-six passes six in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to first readings. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero-three-eight, first reading, an ordinance terminating tax increment financing within the Santa Fe Trail redevelopment area and authorizing certain actions relating thereto. First reading. Twenty-five dash zero-three-nine, first reading, an ordinance amending Article Five of Chapter Five of the City Code related to solicitors and peddlers. First reading. Twenty-five dash zero-four-zero, first reading, an ordinance approving the twenty-twenty-five-twenty-six Annual Action Plan for the CDBG and HOME programs, authorizing applications to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, authorizing execution of a written agreement and acceptance of the CDBG and HOME program funds, and making the necessary appropriations. First reading. Twenty-five dash zero-four-one, first reading, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District R six, Single Family Residential, to District R thirty slash PUD, High Density Residential slash Planned Unit Development, and approving a preliminary development plan for the property located at one-one-six-zero-one East US twenty-four Highway. First reading. Twenty-five dash zero-four-two, first reading, an ordinance approving a special use permit to operate a body art establishment at one-eight-eight-zero-one East Thirty-Ninth Street in Independence, Missouri. First reading.
Thank you. And that brings us to Councilmember Comments. Councilmember Stewart, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one thing. Mr. Coover, I'm going to kind of put you on the spot here with a legal question. In our City Charter, Section five point four, Code of Ethics, it states, "The City Council by ordinance shall adopt a code of ethics which shall be binding upon all city officials and employees and shall be appropriate, and shall appropriate sufficient funds for its enforcement. The code of ethics may be updated from time to time when deemed necessary by the City Council." So after reading that, I was, we do have a code of conduct in our council rules and procedure, but that was passed by resolution. So resolution, ordinance, are we in compliance with the charter? And if you need to get back on that, it's fine.
Well, my preference would be back to you. I mean, I want to make sure that the semantics don't get confusing here because there are a number of different issues here. There has been a, a code of ethics, titled a code of ethics, that has been discussed for some time, but that, that has never come to full fruition. So, yeah, if I can get back to you, I would appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vought, the floor is yours.
I just have one thing. I just want to get a reminder out that tomorrow night is our first Popsicles in the Park. It will be held at Benton Park, which is at seven oh seven South Crane, from six-thirty to eight, so don't miss that.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Wiley?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank the members or citizens who came tonight to speak about the budget. I appreciate the feedback. This is, I've been working on this for the past couple of weeks, and I appreciate the questions. So I have also, I've had a busy week with events. I was happy to attend the rededication of Rotary Park thanks to the Parks Improvement Sales Tax. The new play area includes an agility course designed for kids five to twelve, eighty-eight accessible features and pathways. And I would like to thank the Parks and Rec staff for all their really hard work on, on the new park. I also attended Island Fest last weekend, which is a yearly event. It's one of my favorites. It's on the square. And Island Fest celebrates the Polynesian community of Independence. Thanks for having us. It's always a really great festival. The, last week, we had an IPD commissioning ceremony. We welcomed six new police officers and two new civilian hires. It was really great to hear the backgrounds of the new hires, some really interesting stories. And I love that they've all come to Independence to, to serve our community, so welcome. And then I wanted to let everyone know that this Saturday is the Fairmont Community Center Carnival fundraiser. And I will be there with some adoptable shelter dogs from twelve to three. The address is two-seventeen South Cedar Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McCandless?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to start with, while I voted for the risk management approach, which I think is incredibly important for the city to be attending to risk management, from training of staff to HR policies, to thinking about safety equipment, et cetera, I want to be sure that we don't shortchange existing working programs. So, Mr. City Manager, you and I will be talking more about that and finding ways that we can reassure ourselves and our teammates that that will be the case.
Glad to do so.
Thank you. I want to address the issue that was brought up by a citizen about accounting policies in Gatsby. I had a conversation with our Director of Finance. They met with our auditors to be sure that what we had planned was perfectly legitimate. They reassured us that that was the case. Other communities have done exactly this, where a percentage from the general fund was given as a global budget for a particular department, segregated within that with the rules of how each one of those funds is to be spent. And I just want everybody to understand that we kicked the tires on that. We are okay with the accounting, and that, that question's been addressed. A couple of wonderful things. Englewood had a big celebration, and it was absolutely terrific. And people from all kinds of other communities came here to celebrate with us. So hats off to Englewood for doing such a very nice job. I was able to attend the most wonderful ceremony at the Truman Library to acknowledge fifty-four young people who are all going into public service. These are called the Truman Scholars. And when President Truman finished his time in office, they asked if he wanted a memorial in Washington. And he said yes, but it was a memorial of people. And so the memorial that he built to himself was paying for the training of young people who wanted to dedicate their lives to public service. It was fantastic. There were students from all across the United States, from Guam, from Puerto Rico, and the things that these young people are going to do is amazing. Gives me just incredible hope. I went to an event over at the Kansas City Building Trades and Construction. I went to an event over at the Kansas City Building Trades and Construction Organization, so that's the union that does all of the different trades. And they talked about their apprenticeship program, which is spectacular. And part of their union funds go to pay for their training center, and their training center is top-notch. So, if you have a young person who's thinking about the trades, you can go take them on a tour, they would be delighted to show you what they do. They're journeymen, act as mentors, so they don't just teach them, they create a community around these young people, and it is actually wonderful to behold. And then my final thing is that Scott Lakin from Jackson County, he is the guy who does the tax collecting. You know, tax collectors haven't been treated terribly well in the Bible, and I told Scott he took on a rough job. He reminded us that he does not set tax policy, but he is just the guy who collects the bills. And just as a reminder, every single city and municipality would have to have their own tax collection department. That's expensive, so instead, we do it together. The county does the hard work of collecting the taxes and getting yelled at, and then they send it back to the cities for us to spend according to the things that we have voted on as a community. One of the things that he brought up that I think's really important is there is a way to register your property for a property fraud alert. What that means is, for some reason, someone goes in and tries to change your title or something else, there'll be a flag that comes up at the county, so that can't be done without a series of extra checkmarks. So, if you have somebody who is a senior in your life, and you want to be sure nothing happens to them with bad shenanigans around their property, this is something to really think about. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Fears?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. First of all, many, they won't be listening probably tonight, but we do have about 3,000 visitors to our community with the Community of Christ World Conference going on right now. So, if you see folks around that you might not recognize, or you might look, be dressed a little bit different or something, that's probably what that is. And so, I want to welcome, take the opportunity to welcome those folks to Independence. And then the other thing is, is I agree, I want to thank those that came and talked about the budget. We've been working hard on the budget, been asking lots of questions, we're working to try to, you know, it's always a balancing act with the budget to try to, and that's not really a pun, but it is hard to balance all the pieces that need to come together to make the budget happen and to fund the needs that the city has. And so, that, the input is appreciated, and the work on that doesn't go unnoticed. So, that's all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I just got a couple of things to say here. I, too, went over to the 2025 EMS Week with the fire department, and wanted to thank Chief Walker and his folks for grilling the hamburgers and the hot dogs. I know you enjoyed them and spoke highly of them. I went over to test it, and they were, in fact, good. So, it was a pleasure to be there and enjoying them, recognizing the incredible work of the emergency medical services professionals the week of May 19th. And we truly appreciate their work, and it was our honor to honor them and their dedication and service to our city. On Saturday, the 24th, we were honored to present a proclamation. I know Councilwoman Wiley and Councilmember Vought were there for the opening ceremony, where we presented a proclamation for the annual Island Fest festivity. And I love that because everybody, you get to wear a wild shirt, okay? So, you get to wear a Hawaiian shirt, and it's okay. And so, I really truly enjoyed the Polynesian culture in the metro. They had fantastic food, music, dancing, and diverse vendors, and it was truly a joyful and a meaningful event. So, loved being there. Then on Monday, the 26th, that was Memorial Day. The Spirit of Independence Band always does their annual memorial band concert, and they do just a great job at the Independence Uptown Market. I want to thank Jane Hicklin. If you truly want to watch someone in a true moment of joy, watch Jane conduct the band. She is absolutely in a moment of joy when she's doing that. So, you can just watch someone really, truly enjoy what they do, she does. This concert is always heartfelt tribute, and we appreciate the band's ongoing dedication of honoring our nation's heroes. This one's a sad moment, and I know many of us, all of us on this dais, know Jody Krantz. And it's with great sadness that we share the passing of our dear friend and colleague. She was the Vice President of Economic Development at the Chamber, and she passed away Friday, Jody touched so many lives throughout her career, and she gave so much to our community. As one colleague so beautifully put it, "What Jody did for our city is truly amazing. It was truly her passion." Jody will be truly missed, and she has been missed for months. A celebration of her life will be June 20th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at All Bonnie Winery at 2200 Crenshaw Road in Independence. Those of you who knew her are invited to share your memories and celebrate her remarkable legacy. And with that, Mr. City Manager, I turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Well done on that tribute. Just a couple of quick things from me this evening. We, of course, had the first reading of the budget this evening, and I would also echo thank you to those who shared your thoughts. That's very helpful. One thing, you know, last week, you had your departmental budget presentations, and as I had a chance to review those meetings, one thing I just wanted to make sure is clear for everybody's understanding relates to the number of employees in our police department. So, there are 331 budgeted, full-time equivalent employees in our police department. 231 of those are what we call sworn positions, so people who are, you know, deputized to serve as law enforcement personnel. The rest of those are civilian employees. And as Councilmember Wiley pointed out this evening, we had a commissioning ceremony last week, so as of today, 208 of those 231 positions are filled. Those of you who have followed us for a while know that's a very remarkable turnaround from where we were just a few years ago, when we were under 180 filled positions. So, making really good progress there, but I do want to clarify for everybody that our total budgeted allocation of employees in the police department is 331, again, of which 231 of those are sworn. I want to provide an update on the general obligation bond, which was also touched on briefly this evening. We've started to have calls with our financial advisors and our bond counsel, the attorneys who guide us on all things finances. We are working diligently to get those dollars out the door as quickly as possible. So, here's our current plan that we're rowing towards right now. We are looking towards no later than the end of September to have a tranche of 30 million of the 55 million drawn down on. We are legally required to spend funds that we borrow within three years of when those are issued, and that's our reasonable expectation, that within the next three years, we can get about $30 million of those funds spent. You'll recall that we're planning to spend $6 million a year on street maintenance. Our plans that we're currently putting together have us addressing about $2 million per year on sidewalks, which means within five years, we'll have all of those school projects completed, and then the remaining balance will help us get the bridge projects that we believe we can reasonably tackle out the door. This past Friday, we actually closed bids for a design and construction of the Chrisler Avenue Bridge, as well as the Kentucky Avenue Bridge over Mill Creek, the one that's closer to the old twin drive-in. And so, these projects are all moving forward. I would tell the council, look for an ordinance defining the sale parameters of those bonds in July, and then we'll take the necessary actions to sell those bonds during the month of September. Very quickly, two other things. Folks asked for the budget in all different ways. We heard that tonight, and I certainly want us to accommodate that. Mayor, if you don't mind me pointing out, you asked for a PDF copy of the budget because that was more user-friendly for you. One thing that I want to tell you, we've gone to that flipbook model on our website because the Department of Justice is taking stronger enforcement actions of the Americans with Disabilities Act, and those PDFs pop up as images, and then those don't always read out to people who may be experiencing visual disabilities. So, that's why you've seen that model. But again, that maybe doesn't work for everybody, so if that doesn't work for you, please reach out to me, and we can get that to you in a format that works, and we can also figure out maybe how to make that accessible online to everybody as well. And then I just want to end with sincere apology about the technical difficulties tonight with the, and it sounds like some nights, with the broadcast. We did identify what that issue is, but this council has set as part of your strategic plan, engaging with the community, making sure we communicate clearly, take that responsibility very seriously, and we'll be having some conversations behind the scenes to make sure we follow that consistently. So, thank you.
And if I can follow up on that, I'm glad you mentioned it, because I actually wrote that down. If we can get kind of a follow-up on what happened, and then how do we prevent that in the future, because the point that was made is very important, people need to be able to hear it. Usually, it does work on YouTube, so if you can watch it later, that typically does work. But I know people want to see it in live time, and to be able to text some councilmembers and things like that. So, if you could get back to us on that, what happened, and what can we do, and then what's our game plan for kind of emergency preparedness, since we had the presentation of emergency preparedness earlier, so.
I'll be, I'll be in touch with you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
I'd be grateful. If there's nothing else, we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.